Good evening, everyone. We are going to go ahead and reconvene our regular council meeting for December 20th, 2022. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jeremy Ball.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Mr. Malavi, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Mayor, the City Council met in closed session to discuss the two items on the agenda. Staff discussed those two items. The council discussed those two items with staff, but there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Pastor Joy Price forward for invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Let us pray. Holy One, we lift our lives and our dreams to You on this darkest night of the year. We thank You for all who lead and serve us. We thank You for this beautiful valley in which we live, and we thank You for this holiday season, a time in which we gather with our families and friends. Tonight, we ask that You would share Your wisdom with us as we deliberate the ways in which we can lift up our fellow citizens, especially those who are suffering and in need. Help us to find the resources needed to provide for the least, the last, and the lost among us. Holy One, as we join many other faiths around the world in celebrating different holidays in this season, make us kind and give us smiles for those who feel sadness or grief. Let us shine light on those who live in the darkness today. Let us always shine the light. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to say, that was the best pledge allegiance all year long. You're all invited back all next year to join in. That being said, I hear we have lots of boys and girls here from the Boys and Girls Club. So, I'd like to invite Mr. Michael Baker forward. And while he comes forward, those of you that are here to receive your prize can start lining up here. Since there's a lot of you, come on and line up in front.
Do you want me to say a few words?
Yeah, go ahead and say a few words. Why don't you say a few words so they know why they're getting it?
Sure. Oh, sorry about that. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Baker, and I have the honor of being the CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs. It's first and foremost, I want to thank the parents for coming out and supporting your kids. This is a wonderful support here in the city of Lompoke. We are here to celebrate the gold card ceremonies, and really what that means is, we have, we know from Boys and Girls Clubs across the country that the magic number is 105 days. If we can get a child to attend a Boys and Girls Club 105 days in the same calendar year, they're twice as likely to graduate high school on time and twice as likely to lead a healthy lifestyle. So, the city of Lompoke, every year, has recognized our gold card recipients. And what that means is, these are the children that have achieved and attended at least 105 days this past year, this calendar year. These are children that are well on their way to graduating high school on time with a plan for the future and certainly leading a healthy lifestyle. I want to thank the mayor and council for recognizing these children, and we are very excited and encourage everybody that's watching this at home, but also those of you that are here, to come down and see the Boys and Girls Club. It's a whole new day, and the director of the club, Brienne Morse, where's Brienne? I know she's here. Let's give her a round of applause and her staff, they're doing a great job. I want to thank you for what you're doing. You're doing a great job. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, yes, each of you are going to get a certificate from the city congratulating you for your prize. I'm going to give them to... I was trying to go former. I always call him Mike, but I was trying to be respectful, and I went blank on his last name, even though I know it. See, it happens to all of us, right? But what I really want to do is recognize each one of you. Your certificate is going to say, Certificate of Recognition, in recognition of your achieving gold card status with the Lompoke Boys and Girls Club and making a solid commitment to school attendance and extracurricular activities. And so, I want to read each of your names out loud, and as I read your name out loud, just raise your hand so everybody in the room can see who you are. And then, Mr. Baker will give you your certificate after we're done with this, okay? So, Malachi Perez has 106 days. Eileen Castellanos has 107 days. Annabelle Moreno has 107 days. Deborah Walker has 109 days. Dion España has 110 days. Christopher Steele is at 110 days. Angelique Errol has 111 days. Melody Castellanos has 112 days. Allison España has 114 days. Jacob Hernandez has 115 days. Jamison McMillan is 117 days. Vienna Walker, 117 days. Aubrey McMillan is 120 days. Katie Rodriguez is at 120 days. Nathan Galaz is at 124 days. Alina Rodriguez is at 125. Cindy Guyton is at 129 days. Miguel Mendez is at 129 days. Jose Ortega is at 132 days. Mia Ortega is at 150 days. Azelia Ballard's at 165. Jaden Garimbolo is at 171. Dulce Munoz is at 174. Kingston Dickinson is at 176. Bobby Hernandez is at 177. And Craig Speary is at 181. I want to congratulate all of you for your dedication to your schoolwork, to your friends, and to the community. Keep up the good work, have a wonderful holiday, and you're welcome back here anytime to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can we do a photo?
Absolutely, let's do a photo.
Awesome.
I'll give you those. All right, we have the changing of the guards. So, if anybody's looking for a seat, there are plenty now open. So, if you want to come up front and fill in, if you're here for the next presentation, you're welcome to. I know he's trying to hide, but if Chief Mariani will come join me up here at the front. All right, the rule is, none of you can start crying till we're done with this, all right? I got to get through this. Chief Mariani came to us in September of 24, 2015, to join us as a captain. And somewhere along the way, we were very lucky that he became our police chief. So, it is with both sincere appreciation and recognition of your commitment, dedication, and the most care I've ever seen anyone give our community of Lompoke and its citizens, that we thank you for your energy, wisdom, and leadership. And as of December 31st, 2022, he gets to return to retirement. But, I better see you here as often as you feel you need to get out of LA, that you drop in to check on your legacy because you have done an amazing job in restoring our department to fully staffed until December 31st of 2022. And really changed the culture of the police department, but also our community. It's been a really difficult few years. You have led with such positivity despite it all, and have given me such amazing support, and I thank you for that. I don't know how I would have gotten through these last few years without your partnership and leadership, so I am going to miss you dearly, as I know the entire community will. You have broken barriers, you have changed our community, and shown what it's like to lead a police department with kindness and commitment and community. Thank you.
Lompoke Quality Kleenex. Got to love it. You know, one of the things I told my immediate staff was, I did not want a farewell. I wanted to go quietly into the night. And I failed again. But I want to thank all of you. Forty-nine years ago, I embarked on this career at the age of 18. And I never thought I would do the things, but more importantly, meet the people that I've met along the way. I came here seven and a half years ago in hopes of helping and bringing our police department to the next era. And with my hope and ambition of changing, this city changed me. It restored me a faith in what I did and what we do as public servants. There's no more a noble calling, I think, than doing what we do. We are the most visible and responsive arm of government. And I am so proud to have been able to hold this position, but not something that I could do by myself. These last few years, there was many a night when I sat in that office and thought how we were going to make it. During the pandemic, there were times when we barely had enough people to staff and go out and meet the call load, and I would go up to roll call on some nights. And when only one person or two people from that shift, four other people had picked up an overtime shift to make sure that we would carry on without having to get assistance from anyone else. I told my friends this past weekend, I was talking to a few of my friends who I've known for a long time. I spent 37 years with the Los Angeles Police Department, and I'm extremely proud of that. Have a love for that city and that department as well. But I never saw the level of commitment that I've seen in the last seven and a half years here. There were times when we had incidents and bare-bones minimums, and people would come in on their days off. So, I ask you, as you look to the future, to please take care of this police department. They're not perfect, but they're amazing people that do amazing things that I was able to witness on a daily basis. So, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your hard work, your dedication, and your loyalty, and for making this city safe. Because I guarantee you, without us and without them, it would not be. They really make the difference. So, God bless you all, God bless this city. Amazing city, and it's amazing because of the people. And I'm so glad I was a part of this the last seven and a half years, and I wish you all the very best. And yes, Mayor, I will be coming back. I will be taking my three minutes during public comment on occasion. And also to Dean, thank you for keeping me on this last year, giving me an opportunity to serve, and also take care of my successor, Captain Martin, who has just been a remarkable partner, a true loyal friend, my confidant, my rock. He offered his shoes on occasion, but they were a little bit too big for me to fill. But, just an amazing person. I wish him the very best, and the command staff, and then my left and right arm, Debbie Oliver, who's been with me every step of the way, and everyone else. Thank you once again.
So, stick around. We have a short agenda, a swearing-in, and then I promise, there's cake. So, back to our agenda. City manager, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, I'd like to report. That's a tough act to follow. I wanted to thank all the city staff for working over the holidays. I really appreciate what they do, especially our public safety, our utility groups, and everybody that makes things happen behind the scenes. I also want to congratulate the council on getting re-elected. We've got a lot of things done this year, and I'm looking forward to working with you guys again. If I could, I wanted to say thank you to Joe, too, and congratulate him. I know Joe always liked quotes, so I had this one from Winnie the Pooh that I thought was fitting. How lucky I am to have something that makes me sad in saying goodbye. It's been a pleasure working with you, Joe. I know you've already gone through this, but I want to thank him for everything he did, and he's second to none, so thank you.
Okay. Well, as we fight back tears, as we continue to lament our loss and celebrate his retirement, we'll move on to consent calendar. If you would like to speak to any item that's on consent calendar, you're welcome to come to the podium. I do know that we have an action item that needs to be read into the record before we go to public comment, so I'll let our city attorney do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is an amendment to the city manager's employment contract. It sets the salary of the city manager at the new level listed in the staff report, which is the same percentage salary adjustment received by the city's management supervisory and confidential employees group in July of 2022, and the recommendation is to adopt.
Thank you. So, the floor is now open for consent calendar public comment. If you would like to speak to an item, you may come to the podium, or you may call 805-875-8201. Did we have any written comments on this item?
No, ma'am, nothing.
All right. While we wait to see if there's a call, I'll read consent calendar into the record. It's, "All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion for these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting." Seeing no one rise and no written nor calls that have come in, I'll bring it back to council. Do we have anyone wanting to pull an item, or do we have a motion? Councilmember Vega.
I'll make the motion, and we accept consent calendar as written.
All right. Councilmember Ball.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And consent calendar passes 5-0. We have no staff presentations. We'll move on to oral communications. This is regarding any matter that is not on the agenda under the city purview. If you'd like to speak, the podium is open. You have three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anybody calls, I'd like to fill the time with one of my many announcements to shorten the meeting. Beautification Commission held its holiday decoration contest and announced its winners. The best was 1408 West Pear Street. First place went to 921 North R Street. Second place went to 1100 Archer Street, and Third Street went to 412 South Sage. And I advise everybody to get out, go take a look at the amazing lights our community has put out this year. Seeing no one rise and no one call in for oral communications, we will come back to the agenda, and we will now have the election presentation, which is the presentation of certificates of election, administration of the oaths of allegiance, and seating of the newly elected mayor and council members. City Clerk? Good evening, everybody. Could I have Councilmember Starbuck, Councilmember Vega, and Mayor Osborne please join me in the front? Are you ready? Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I will support the laws and policies of the city of Lompoke, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. I need you guys to sign these, please. This is yours. All right. Did we have any written communications?
No, ma'am, nothing.
All right. This is your final chance for oral communications on tonight's agenda or other city matters. You have two minutes. You may call in at 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anybody rises or calls in, I will make the announcement that wreaths across America with the La Pracima Daughters of American Revolution Local Chapter placed wreaths on 470-some-odd veterans' graves at the Evergreen Cemetery this past weekend. I want to thank them for that. We have over 1,600 veterans buried there. Their goal is to eventually get to all of those, and if you would like, you can support them with a two-for-one right now for next year through the 17th of next month, no, 15th of next month. So, it's $15 for a wreath. If you buy a wreath, Wreaths for America will match one-for-one. We have the phone ringing, so we will go to the caller. Good evening. You are live in the council chambers. You have three minutes to give, two minutes to give your public comment. Please go ahead, thank you.
Good evening. Gabe Garcia, City of Lompoke, and I just wanted to say congratulations to the mayor. And I just wanted to say congratulations to the mayor, to Councilmember Starbuck, Councilmember Vega, and on your reelection. And also, I wanted to just beg and thank you for your service, Chief Mariani, and for making a difference in Lompoc. And to city staff, to city manager Albro, and our citizens. And I wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
All right. So is that, no, they're not coming to the podium. I thought a former city manager troop was making his way to the podium, but if you're welcome to, if you'd like to say anything. You've got two minutes of public comment. I thought you were headed to the podium, that you missed us so much that you had to make a public comment about Chief Mariani.
Oh, no. I tried to get here, there was an accident, never before in my years driving up and down. Pismo had an accident, and I just sat there. That's why I'm texting people, I'm hurrying. No, I just, I didn't get to say, I don't know if Joe's around there, but what a guy. You know, I was begging him when, there he is, when Pat left, it's like, you have to stay, and he was going, no, I'm gonna go, too. But I'm so thankful he decided to stay on. The community needed him. You can see how much he loves the community, and things have just gotten better and better under him. So I'm glad he's finally taken time after 46 years, or whatever it is now. Lost track. Forty, okay.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, oh my god. So, no, I just.
Tried to get him to make it 50, but he refuses.
Well, I just wanted to be here and just say thanks, you know, thanks to him for everything he's done. He supported me the whole time I was here. Couldn't ask for a better person, and just wanted to wish him best on his final retirement, right? Okay, final retirement. That was it. So thank, good seeing everybody.
All right, we'll have cake soon. All right. Seeing no one else call and no one else rise, even though he didn't intend to, thank you for coming forward and saying a few words. We'll close oral communications, and we'll bring it back to council. We'll start with Councilmember Ball.
Okay, I'm gonna be super fast, because I'm anxious to eat cake. Yes, I got to attend the Wreaths Across America for the first time with the mayor. I want to thank Denny Overton, who heads that up, for inviting me. It was a really amazing experience. I had no idea we had that many veterans buried at Lompoc Cemetery, 1,600. So it was a very poignant time there. I want to celebrate, a couple weeks ago, I was invited to go to Garcia Dance Studio. They just celebrated 25 years. They are an anchor in our community, giving lots of opportunity to young people to learn to dance and actually become really good at it, and go show Santa Barbara who's who, which is great. Let's see, I got to attend the Lompoc Police Department swearing in and promotion. Congratulations to Corporal John Reyna and new officer Heather Smith. Again, as the mayor mentioned, we are fully staffed until the end of the month. Joe, thank you, but not, we wish you'd just stuck around a little longer. It's gonna be some big shoes to fill, but we'll have that discussion soon. Okay, what else we have here? Last but not least, it did my heart so good to attend the high sign over at American Host. They did the unveiling about a week and a half ago. The mayor was there as well. Just a beautiful example of the community coming together, not depending on the government to do anything, but they rolled up their sleeves, figured it out, got some investment. People pitched in a lot of effort and supplies, and it's just a really cool thing. So if you haven't seen it yet, go by American Host and check out that sign. And I want to wish you all a happy holidays and Merry Christmas, and see you next year.
All right. Councilmember Codova.
Chief Mariani, I regard you as a strong and brave leader. I am so happy that I got to work with you during these past few years. But most importantly, I regard you as a friend. You know how I feel about you, I've always told you. And so even though I'm sad to see you go, I am happy that you are now retiring and that you're gonna get to go live a full life of travel, hopefully, and so much more. We appreciate all the work that you did for us. I, I will miss you. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Again, you know, I'd like to wish Joe Mariani a happy retirement, guy. You earned it. And you know what? It's been a pleasure. All my meetings with you or any of my conversations were all positive, and they ended up on a positive note. So cheers, I think you earned it, and I'm happy to see you go off in a, with a smile, kind of, sort of, a couple tears, maybe, but you know what? And then you have your successors here and your people here, which it sounds like we're in good hands here, Joe, so you can go and do what you gotta do while we're still here, you know? And I'd like to at least acknowledge and say that I've had positive experiences throughout my career, even though, you know, I've been more of a spark plug here, something different. Let's put it this way. I'd like to acknowledge Patrick Wyman and his wife out there, and I see, we have Brad Wilkie, we have Jim Troop. We've all had interactions, and I don't think we've had anything negative. It's, you know, we may have differences of opinion, but I think it was all with due respect. So I've learned, I'm learning, and as you guys can see, that we're here for the betterment of Lompoc, moving Lompoc forward, and seeing the staffing numbers up to par, where we can actually maybe see the future and have some hope. I'd like to see us continue, and the reason I'm even staying here and the election part of it with, with everyone is, is, you know, we've learned to get along to a point to where Lompoc is the, the primary goal here, to make it better as a community for the people of Lompoc. So it wasn't about personal things, it may have seemed at one time, but as we, as we move forward, we're learning as we go. So thank you for, everybody, for all your participation, and thanks all of you. It's really nice to see all of you. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm not one to delay a party, I don't have any reports.
No, you're never one to delay the cake, it's me. So to finish up with Wreaths of America, from now through January 15, if you contribute towards next year, Wreaths Across America will match the donation. You can donate at wreathsamerica.org, and the local code is CA0658P. If you're interested in supporting them this year, they will have cleanup on the 14th of January at the cemetery at 10:00 a.m. It's a big job. The wreaths must be dismantled from the metal that they come on and the branches separated from it for recycling. So it's a big job, given cleaning up takes actually longer than placing the wreaths. So I look forward to seeing the community come out and support that. We also have some closures here at City Hall during this time. So the pool will be closed from Sunday, December 18 through January 1 for routine maintenance. And it's an annual thing. We've seen the swim lessons and all of that fall during the holidays, because everybody's traveling. So we take advantage of that time to make sure our pool is clean and up and running. Lompoc City Hall and other facilities will be closed to the public from Friday, December 23 through Monday, January 2, and reopen on Tuesday, January 3, 2023. Village Library and the Lompoc Library book drops will remain open, and the library digital resources will still be available. And utility payments can be made online or dropped into the yellow box outside. Regular solid waste collection services will take place during the week, and Lompoc landfill will be closed on the 25th of December and the 1st of January. If you have any issues during that time, if it's life-threatening, be sure and call 911. For other issues, there's a link on our website with phone numbers to call. We will have some staffing in each of the departments to manage these things, and as usual, our police and fire will fully be at staff. So we thank you for serving during a time when the rest of us are celebrating the holidays. For those of you keeping track, we won't have a January 3 meeting. Our next full meeting will be January 17, 2023, so please consider coming out for that. I attended many of the same events that Councilmember Ball mentioned to the ones that he didn't. I had regular meetings for our Northern California Power Agency, Santa Barbara County Area Governments, the Air Pollution Control District, the Santa Barbara County Mayors and City Managers Meeting, as well as the Vandenberg Space Force Base Holiday Mixer. So on that note, thank you, Joe, for your service. Enjoy your retirement, come back to Lompoc to relax, because we all know LA isn't really that relaxing. I want each and every one of you to have a safe holiday, no matter what you celebrate and who you celebrate with it. The important thing is that we spend time with family, not spend a lot of money, but if you're gonna shop, shop local. All right, we will adjourn for cake and to the next Lompoc City Council meeting, 6:30 p.m. on January 17, 2023.